And we will call this meeting to order. Carol Lee, I noticed last time I read this and you reminded me that the city clerk normally reads this.
The presentation of the agenda we will do at the beginning of the seven o'clock meeting. I can read that.
Okay. So at this point in time, we have a closed session. We have a roll call for the council members that are here.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Kennedy. Councilmember Vias.
Here.
Mayor Protem McEckern is noted as absent. Mayor Cox.
And here. Do we have a public comment? Because I've gone over this so fast that I keep reminding to slow down. We don't have a public comment. We just go into.
We always should open a public comment just in the.
On both, just in case.
Just in case. Every meeting is supposed to have a public comment.
Well, thank you because I didn't think we had to do it if there was no one here. But on the other hand, people watching don't know that. So I'll go ahead and note that there was time for a public comment. There is no card. There are no cards and no one has stepped forward. And so, Mr. Attorney, we have an executive session at this point.
Thank you, Mayor Cox. We have three closed-session items, one for the airport authority and two for the city council. They all are potential litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9 subsection C. To the extent there's any reportable action, we will report it either at the conclusion of the closed session or immediately at the commencement of the seven o'clock meeting.
We have no other business here. We will adjourn to executive session at 5:01. Here. And also, Rosa Garcia Cabral. We try to honor those individuals and provide recognition for outstanding individuals in the community that have given of themselves for the benefit of someone else. And we seem like we're honored every week here. The first I'm going to give this certificate of recognition to the outstanding teacher. And Marcela Valencia, this is a certificate. I'm going to show this to you first. In recognition of your outstanding teaching efforts and inspiring your students to help others in need. We present that.
Good evening. Thank you for having us here. And I really appreciate this certificate of recognition. I am very grateful with, you know, all my students for helping me, for helping the communities, the indigenous communities that we help in Mexico, for helping me raise awareness of all the need in, you know, in that part of Mexico. So, thank you so much for this certificate. And I will continue doing whatever it takes to, you know, motivate my students to help others in need. Thank you so much.
And thank you. Now, I'll ask you to change places with a certificate of recognition of an outstanding youth, Rosa Garcia Cabral. Is that just that right? Cabral. Now, this young lady, who is 16 years old, but her deeds exceed that, raised close to $1,000 selling close to 800 tamales in your church. Is that true? The tamales are all handmade by Rosa and her mother. Were made with ingredients purchased and donated by her family. So not only thank you, but thank your family and those people who assisted. And this is a certificate from the city of Victorville for your outstanding achievement. Hold that and look right this way. Because we do appreciate you as an outstanding student. And thank you very, very much. And, oh yes, you have to get them on this too. This won't be on a wanted poster. Would you like to make some comments?
I just wanted to say that thank you all for recognizing what I did and that it's good to help others.
And thank you. Thank you once again. Those things are always the good part of the meeting. And thank you, folks, for coming down. We're now to the city clerk presents the agenda.
The city council of the city of Victorville welcomes the public's participation in tonight's meeting. Persons who wish to address the council on a specific item or any item that does not appear on the agenda are requested to complete one of the white speaker cards located in the council chambers lobby and give it to the city clerk prior to the meeting. The mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a speaker card. Pursuant to government code section 54954.3, state law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments are to be limited to three minutes per speaker or less as deemed necessary by the mayor. Communications are to be addressed directly to the city council. Individual comments to staff or members of the audience are not permitted. Any individual or group who engages in disruptive conduct during the meeting will be removed from the chambers by order of the mayor. Thank you for your cooperation. All documents to be considered for approval at this meeting are before the council and there are no revisions on tonight's agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on the agenda is the public comments. I have three cards. And I'm presenting these in the, or I'm going to call the individuals up on the order that I received them. First individual is Mr. Curtis Green.
Honorable Mayor, councilmembers. I'd like to speak on behalf of providing a good service for our current armed forces, being a bus service out to Fort Irwin from here. There currently is a service going on right now and there's a proposal to buy five more buses. So, because the buses that they're currently using are about to break down, type of thing. There is a financial input that the city of Victorville is being asked to forward, but I would like for that to be negotiated if possible. The VVTAs also trying to find other ways so that the financial impact to each of the cities won't be as much. But councilmember Vias has the numbers for you. But we're trying to lower that and we don't want a categorical no. There are 42 individuals, soldiers, currently riding from Victorville proper. And that is about 27% of the total ridership. In the Victor Valley area, it's up to 42% of the ridership. Now, I don't know how many of you have ever driven out to Fort Irwin, but imagine being a soldier who has to be out there 6:30 in the morning for physical ther- not physical therapy, for physical fitness. And then working a full day and then having to come home. It is a tiring drive out there and many accidents have happened out there on Irwin Road, as you may or may not know of. But like I said, all I'm doing is asking for your open-mindedness at least to consider budgeting money for that if a request is made. Like I said, VVTAs is trying to make the financial impact for each city less than it is right now. But at first, it started with Sandbags saying, no, they wouldn't support it at all. And now they're putting up $2 million in this effort. And VVTAs is putting up $1.6 million in this effort. So, they're coming together and all we're doing is asking for, you know, your open-mindedness on that matter. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Green. I will remind the audience that because these are not agendized items, generally when individuals speak, we can't respond or have a discussion in regard to that because they are not agendized. However, these are matters for the city council to consider. I'm sure this is important enough. We do have a member of this council, Angela Vias, councilmember Angela Vias, that sits on that, the transit committee. I'm sure this will be coming back to us for consideration if there's additional funds involved. And thank you for your comments, Mr. Green. The next individual is Hakim Mahajadi, senior. And I will remind you, you have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and council. It's a privilege to talk to you today. I actually had some comments for Mr. McEckern. I didn't get a chance to offer kudos and thanks for his work that he did with warming stations when it was really, really cold. I thought that was very noble and very, I thought that was very nice and very good. And I wanted to offer him praise for that. One of the things I also wanted to do was bring to council attention, I actually saw somebody using the restroom in, on the side of a building in Old Town. And I sort of asked him, I said, well, why are you going right here? And they said, well, there's no restrooms out here in the Old Town. I said, are there like porta potties or something? And they said, no, it'd be great if the city could consider putting a porta potty in there and, you know, people would be able to have dignity to use the restroom in a sort of a secure place. So I wanted to either bring that to your attention or ask or see if that could be possibly looked upon, maybe a porta potty in certain higher areas where some of our less fortunate citizens or some of our less fortunate people could have a place to go use the restroom. You know, some of the businesses may or may not want them there. And I know that's their choice, but I just want to bring that to your attention. And the final thing is, I'm going to be talking to you more and more as we get in the year about recreation funding. I know we're at the mid-year budget and mid-year funds or mid-year before we start the new budget in July. And I really want you guys to consider expanding some recreational programs. A mobile recreation program is something I spoke of in the past. But also, I want to look at some of the other programs that were cut through when the economy got tough. So I really want you guys to consider those for me if you would. I thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker, Hakim Mahajadi, Jr.
Hello. I'm just thinking that we should. I'm, we should, how come you guys don't call it, like, how you visit any, like, potty school? Like, you guys should, like, come to school and teach them about city council. And so, like, they can learn, so they can have a role model or something. So, like, they can be, well, one day I want to be mayor or something like that. Because there's a, because there's a lot of kids at my school that don't, like, they don't, they want to be mayor, but they don't know how to stuff. So, I go to Britwood Elementary on Hook Street. So, there are a lot of kids at my school that say that. And I just want you guys to consider it.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would want to address the council? I have no other cards. If not, we'll move into the agenda. The first item is the library board of trustees consent calendar, item number four on the agenda.
Motion by councilmember Kennedy, second by councilmember Vias. Motion carries with Mayor Protem McEckern absent.
Southern California logistic rail authority, there are no items. Southern California logistic airport authority, number five, consent.
Motion by councilmember Vias, second by councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries with Mayor Protem McEckern absent.
Item number six under written communications. We have the, is item number six and item number?
Item number nine.
Nine to be taken?
Yes, those are companion items. They're just on different agendas.
Are they going to be taken at the same time?
Yes, that's appropriate.
Okay. These are written communications, not a public hearing. Is there any comments from, any questions from the staff on this?
Yeah. Al?
Yes.
I've got a couple of things, Keith. I was looking over the Robs listing and I saw a payment to, well, I don't remember who it was to, but it was for Northgate Apartments. I thought we were long finished with the Northgate Apartments.
We were finished as far as owning it and operating it. We did shed that as an asset owned by the Victorville Public Development Corporation, which was our form nonprofit. However, as a function of that transaction, there were surviving obligations, including a subsidy. So that's likely what that item particularly represents.
And my other question was, as I look at the two lists, the revenue list and the expense list, it appears that we're going to be about 7.3 million short from the revenues available.
Yeah, and if I might, and to bring some clarification, because I know it appears as if there's a deficit there. However, this process isn't set up as how we would traditionally budget. And in fact, the two recommendations that you're approving, one being the adoption of a budget for the successor agency, which includes that $12.4 million. There's actually $12.4 million available to satisfy those obligations. The second item deals with the airport authority adopting a debt service budget. And probably the better illustration is on page 44 of the agenda. And that actually helps identify for you how all $12 million are accounted for in terms of the revenue being available to satisfy the obligation. But basically, the 5.154 million dollar number that's in the fiscal impact, that represents part of the revenue that's available. Doesn't include what's on page 44, which has SCLA funding for debt service. And that's because pursuant to the JPA, the VITA JPA money is to go directly to SCLA. And that money is actually matched up to satisfy the debt service obligation for SCLA. And that doesn't include also the cash balance that the successor agency had on hand. So there's two other components of funds that probably could have been referenced there on the fiscal impact to show that the fiscal impact balances out against expenditures. But what they're actually trying to do is, in the fiscal impact recommendation, they're trying to identify what is the fiscal impact to just the successor agency, not inclusive of the.
So there are funds available and this will not result in any deficit spending?
That is correct. And the only reason why we're presenting it this way is typically we would like to include these all as a part of the budget process with the whole dissolution of redevelopment and the process that they're putting us through. One of the reasons why we don't is because we don't want to have any potential through the budgeting process to shortchange our ability to collect the maximum amount for the obligations are due. So in this case, we're forced to do it a little bit backwards. And that's identifying all of the expenditures that we believe are obligations. And then, of course, collecting to the amount that, you know, can be available to satisfy those obligations. Very typically, you're going to experience a continued process where you're planning or proposing for expenditures that exceed your revenue. But effectively, the way the process works out in the end, which is the case that we're at here, is you have exactly the amount of revenues to actually pay for what you can spend as an enforceable obligation.
Thank you. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
I was going to say, so we're not going to have a shortfall on the debt service payments in June this year? Is that the right conclusion to reach?
No, that isn't the right conclusion. You will have effectively a shortfall in the debt service obligations. But we're passing through everything that's available to be to collect it. So, there's two things going on. You've got a procedural process to collect as much as you can for the dissolution. The shortfall on the bond side is actually occurring because the assessed valuations have dropped so dramatically.
The tax increment just isn't there.
Right.
I'll have a little more on that later, but. That answer my question?
Are there any further questions from the council members? Madam Clerk, the resolution, resolution number R-SA-13-001. It's identical resolution for both six and nine, so one action will take care of that?
That's correct.
Okay. Then the chair is open for a motion.
Motion by councilmember Kennedy, second by councilmember Vias. Motion carries with Mayor Protem McEckern absent.
Okay, we have agenda, the next subject matter, successor agency to the RDA, number seven, is written communications.
I have a couple of issues with this agenda item. The first one is, is that, help me to understand, if we absorb the RDA staff, why do we need to hire brokers to market the properties?
It's not really quite the best comparison to make. We, in fact, did as a part of response of the RDA dissolution, we did have to transfer some employees, particularly from the marketing division, to help SCLA at least absorb the employees that it could. It couldn't take on the whole former marketing division. So effectively, the marketing division that SCLA did take on resulting from the dissolution, they're stretched very thin. In fact, we have one employee dedicated full-time to that effort. And quite candidly, with the workload that we have that employee handling, it's easier for us to manage, at least on a case-by-case basis, the marketing and the showing and the soliciting of proposals from outside brokers. So this is doing the best we can with the physical staffing resources that we have.
Okay, and then my other issue is, is that we're extending this contract. And I spoke to some other brokers in the area and they say that they've never seen the RFP that went out. And so, when we issue an RFP, do you not have, like, a vendor list that you notify normally?
Normally, we do. In fact, I did share with you the.
I'm sorry, I got that at 2:00 and I wasn't able to open it.
And I'm sorry that we couldn't get it to you sooner. But I guess to answer the question, we did go through a process. We did notify brokers in the area. And in fact, a lot of that information that we provided actually illustrates the history of who we notified, how we went through the selection process, how we've gotten here as far as the original award. There was a piggyback involved in the Second Amendment. And then effectively, where we're at today. And where we're at today is, the contract and this relationship started largely in response to the former RDA wanting to start selling off its industrial and commercial properties. So we had initiated the process to solicit for brokerage services. Eventually, as the dissolution process became more complicated and quite honestly, difficult for us to represent our ability to actually sell the property, we've started actually scaling back in that scope of service. But along the way, we've actually found benefit in having a broker available to represent SCLA's interest on certain properties, not all the properties. And in fact, what Bradco is currently representing the airport authority on are two buildings only of a much larger number of buildings that we actually have in our real estate portfolio. So it allows us to have specialized attention on a particular building so that we don't necessarily take away the limited staff that we have that might be working on more pressing or more important projects.
My concern is, is that we're not just handing over these agreements or extending them to just certain individuals. And I just want the city to be more transparent. And I would like this agreement to have an RFP so that everybody has an opportunity to bid on this.
Well, I think we're, I would sense that we're doing that. There's a similarly-natured item later in the agenda where we've identified that our real estate services needs somewhat differ within the city. And I'm not finding the item really quickly, but we did just recently also go through a similar process. In fact, it's item number 17, where we did solicit for real estate brokerage services. Ironically, the broker that is the subject of this item seven was also a responding party to item 17. And I believe, and there's another department head that can speak better to 17 as to what exactly they were looking for in the criterion. But I would certainly believe, reviewing that staff item, that their needs for representation are slightly different than our needs for representation based upon the level of expertise or type of work that they do. Saying it differently, in the case of Bradco, we've relied on them and to this point, we've been satisfied with their ability to represent us on industrially-natured properties and particularly as it relates to the potential leasing of the industrial properties at SCLA. I do believe item 17 is selecting a different company because they're dealing more so with commercial office-type properties. So, I would say the transparency is there and in fact, so much so.
On item 17, I would agree, the transparency is there. But I just, I'm not comfortable with extending this agreement. I think it should go out again for RFP.
And just to be clear to the rest of the council, the process that we went through in item seven did in fact go through an RFP back in 2011.
Seven or 17? I'm sorry, it did go?
It did go through a process, yeah.
This doesn't present, this doesn't prevent any broker from bringing a deal, right?
That's correct.
Anybody can, anyone who has a deal can bring it to us. Bradco just represents our side. Am I clear about that?
He's a seller rep. And the way it works is if any broker for that fact is a seller rep and they also bring in the tenant, they can actually represent both seller and buyer in the transaction and basically capture the entire commission.
Since the RDA has been dissolved, wouldn't you say that the scope of work for this initial RFP has changed?
It has changed. And in fact, that's what we've in fact done to keep up with the changes. We've modified the scope of work over time to be what it is now.
That's why I'm thinking that it should be a new RFP since the scope of work has changed.
Scope of work in the sense of the exact properties, but the nature of the work associated with the type of representation being industrial-related is what we're relying on to justify continuing to use this service.
Other questions? I have a couple of questions. Is this for the sale of property or is this to negotiate lease agreements?
This is for lease agreements.
It's for lease agreements. Do you know the number involved or is it any and all lease agreements?
There's currently two buildings that we're having them market. It's buildings 780 and 789 at SCLA.
And what about Sterling? Aren't they doing the same thing?
Not on airport. The Sterling agreement that we have, it's their responsibility to market and manage what we call off-airport properties. What they actually market are those off-airport properties. They also market those buildings that they built where they're actually trying to fill with tenants. So they have their own brokerage service for their own assets. This agreement is subject only to what we call on-airport properties, which both buildings 780 and 789 are located.
Do you expect this to be expanded to include other properties and buildings?
I do expect the need at some point in the future to have, to be responsive to any vacancies that come online. So, the way this has been drafted is it provides SCLA with the flexibility to add on units as units come available. It's not uncommon at SCLA, especially for some of the older leases, where we have tenants with very short notices to terminate vacating premises, giving us very little time to respond on the marketing and getting the property reoccupied. So, it has in fact been structured so that we have flexibility to respond quickly as opposed to having to wait for a very long RFP and purchasing process.
I have one more question. I don't want to prolong this, but you indicated in your explanation that this in fact was an RFP. When? If you have the information, where did it?
The staff report.
It was extended to, and who responded?
The staff report identifies that the RFP was advertised January twenty-fifth of 2011. The responding parties, I know Bradco, of course, Leon Associates. There was only two that actually showed up for the interview. There was actually three locally that were solicited, is what I remember, and I can't remember the third company.
I think some good questions have been raised, because we, different times here, that, that, true or untrue, that there's a select few that get to be a part of it, and everybody else gets cut out of the situation. And I think one of the things that happened during the last election, this council, I think to the person, agreed that one of the things we want is transparency. For all transactions from staff, from the council. And I, I think there were very good questions asked, because without that information, this, one could draw a different conclusion. If in fact the RFPs were sent out, and we have a list to substantiate that, and they chose not to respond, then that's a different issue. But I'd sure like to see who it went to, if we have a list, because I got a call from an individual who said he received it and chose not to. I got another call from an individual who said he did not. And I don't know, I'm, I'm not the staff person, but we certainly don't want to leave the impression that we have a select list. Just, in fact, we want the opposite. Is there any urgency to voting on this now, or waiting till the next meeting?
Any, I, I would leave that to your decision. The contract, I believe we're in a lapsed term. We actually have the contractor currently providing services with a lapsed term. So from that perspective, we certainly would like to get this done as soon as, as possible, since we're already in that lapsed-term state.
I will direct this to the attorney. It's not my intent to take a position yes or no. It is my intent to assure the public that this is transparent, that we have notified everyone that equal, everyone had an equal opportunity. And if there's an urgency from the next two weeks, can this have a thirty-day extension and bring this back with the information we requested?
You could, you could certainly agree to just extend it for thirty days right now. Keith, I think that would be acceptable right now, and bring it back to the next agenda for further extension or consideration.
All of us would like to be able to assure people who ask us that this was a list, that this complied, we have sent it out, we, we took the responses, they were looked at it objectively, and in fact, that this is a logical decision, or we reach the conclusion that we may have to resend it out. I'm not sure about that. Now, there's a disadvantage of resending it out, and I've heard the legal before. I can remember one time when we received offers and we, we sent it out again, and of course, the person who received the first offer really objected, because they were disadvantaged, because the competitor knew what they had submitted. And, and of course, I understand the unfairness of that, so.
Are we talking about doing a new RFP?
If I might just answer the questions, I do have the original staff right up in front of me, dated April fifth, 2011, and that was the professional services agreement for brokerage services. It actually does identify that on January twenty-fifth, 2011, RFP was advertised in local papers, so it was public, publicly noticed with, with circulation. RFPs were also sent, in addition to the solicitation in the paper, to Coldwell Banker, Bradco Companies, and Leon Associates, and Golden State Professionals, and CB Richard Ellis.
Okay.
So more than what I thought, and I'm sorry for that, not recalling it right off the top of my head. Notwithstanding that, a mandatory pre-proposal meeting was scheduled on February ninth, 2011, and only two companies attended that pre-proposal meeting, Bradco Companies and CB Richard Ellis. So we did go through a, a process, where we tried to cast a wide net with the newspaper, then narrowing it with those that actually asked for information.
And there was a legal notice in the paper, that you, did you indicate a legal notice was also?
I'm sorry?
A legal notice was also, or some kind of a notice in the news media?
Yeah, I would, I wouldn't believe that it was officially a legal notice, but there was advertising in the local paper.
It was advertised. Okay, that would have been very, very helpful to have that, because I, I'm sorry, I don't remember what occurred. When you went out for the RFPs, was there a given time of how long this contract would be good for?
I know we've, I believe we've been doing it annually, Sophie.
Well, I don't want to put staff in a position, trying to hold staff work here, because we make mistakes when we try to rush it, but, and, and this may be the right decision, is that we approve it, or the right decision may be, if there's any other questions for the council, to extend this for thirty days, not to cause hardship on somebody who's gone through the procedure, assure this council that everything has been correct, and bring it back, or they can proceed. This is up to the city council, I think we've had.
I would like to extend it and take a look at the paperwork. I wasn't able to open it today. I would have to go home and do that, I didn't have time.
And out of fairness to the rest of the council, I could actually, I've got the email right here, I could forward it to the rest of the council, so you all have the same information that Councilwoman Vias has.
And then, once I have the information, I'll have better questions, or I feel comfortable with voting on it.
Yeah, I have to ask a question. There, there's no second, but I'm not shutting it out yet. It's to extend it for the thirty days?
Uh huh.
Extend for thirty days?
Yes.
I'm going to second that. We don't have a second, but I'm going to second it, because I think it's so important that we, and I guess in all fairness, staff, if I had looked at this earlier and had given you the questions, you probably could have provided all this information to each one of us before the meeting started. I'm a little reluctant to take the information without having it in front of me. I trust you, staff, I don't want you to leave you that impression, but I think it's more important that the public trusts us. So I'm, I'm going to second. There's a motion and second. Those in favor, vote.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Mayor Cox.
Just so I understand, the motion, it is to extend the contract thirty days and come back with a more detailed staff presentation?
That's correct.
Motion carries with Mayor Pro Tim McEagren absent.
Thank you, councilmembers, for being, for being patient on that, but I think that there were some very good questions raised. I think it is to the benefit of the staff and the council. We almost have a new council staff that's working with, we'll get to know each other in, in time, and be able to cover all of those things, so that we don't wait until the last minute. And I take blame for that, because I did not read my agenda until this morning, or I would have come up with some questions earlier. We are now at, I lost track of where I'm at, item number eight. Request to approve Amendment One to the Lead Truck Use Premier Agreement between Church and Dwight Company, Inc., and the Successor Agency, extending the term twelve months.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries with Mayor Pro Tim McEagren absent.
Item nine was the same as item six, and that has been taken care of. We are at the consent calendar for Victorville Water District, item ten, and this is, I believe, the second reading and adoption of the ordinance.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries with Mayor Pro Tim McEagren absent.
Victorville Housing Trust is the next item, consent calendar, agenda item number eleven. Request to authorize the execution by the Economic Development Administrative Subordination Agreement regarding MAP case number nine zero two dash zero two, Robert Johnson. And I requested that this be put off, because there was a question, and I read the, I read this, didn't find the answer, but in the briefing I had with the city manager, there was a clarification, and I'd requested, Doug Robinson, that you state that now?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This item originally came to the council at the last meeting, and included an sort of early rebate, with some funds coming back to the agency. Upon reviewing the tapes and reviewing the direction of the council, staff negotiated with Mr. Johnson to eliminate that portion that was problematic for the council, and so therefore, this is a simple, still a subordination, it still exists. And ultimately, if he fulfills the requirements of the subordination agreement, his entire loan amount would be forgiven at the, at the end of the term, like the others experienced. It does include a, a change in, in rates, as was discussed at the last meeting.
Thank you, Doug.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if I might also just add to that, this item has, has resulted, in its current form, it's following our standard process, which is a very traditional subordination request. And we do these very routinely, and it's required when a mortgage assistance applicant is actually refinancing its home. And, and that's where we ended up in this item tonight. The item, as it was brought for, forward before you at the last council meeting, was being responsive to a period of time when we were stuck in the dissolution process, where we couldn't enter into new agreements. And as weird as it sounds, it made better sense, as weird as it sounds, we were able to allow for the applicant to pay off, or pay, effectively pay off the loan, instead of allowing for the refinance. So the item that was at the last meeting was actually a negotiated attempt to, to navigate the, the process of not being able to do this type of traditional subordination, and instead, actually allow for the payoff of a loan, where we would actually collect monies and then effectively use those for the purposes of the housing trust. It was entirely responsive to a period of time where we had no certainty as to when we can help satisfy this home buyer, and in the meantime, this home buyer, homeowner was effectively stuck in limbo. And what was before you at the last meeting was really an attempt to try to work with and help this home buyer out. But as his process delayed, as we approached him, resulting from your last concerns, we went ahead and suggested that this be the preferred course of action, given that this is standard, and so much time has lapsed.
Well, thank you for that. Thank you for the explanation. I'm sure Mr. Johnson, he's appreciative of the staff input, all this, and it did clarify the issues, so.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Vias. Motion carries with Mayor Pro Tim McEagren absent.
The city council agenda consent items, number twelve. This is a consent calendar, item twelve, sub-items A through E, no, through J.
I'd like to pull item H.
Are there any other items that a member of the council would want to pull at this time? If not, there'd be a motion in order to approve the consent, pulling number H, and having a discussion separately.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Vias.
Councilmember Vias?
Yes, on item number, on letter H, I, I have an issue, because I've, I've seen this, these claims against the city. And my question is, I guess would be a legal question for our attorney, is, wouldn't this be a closed-session document? And I'll tell you why it bothers me so much, is that we are listing the officer's name in this, and it really bothers me, because it's a one-sided report, it's only the claimant's allegations against our police officer. And I don't think it's fair to him or his family, or even safe, for some of the things that are being said in these claims, that either the city should redact the name out of that, or these should be considered closed-session documents, since they are potential litigation. And I would think that maybe we could use, under the guise of personnel confidentiality laws?
Certainly, you could take any of these claims up as closed-session items. They are potential litigation, there are claims against the city, which is a precursor to litigation. And where names are being listed on the agenda, that's probably not a bad idea at all. Policy in the past has been for the risk manager to handle these and just put these on the agenda, because we typically reject the claims to start a statute of limitations running.
But some of these claims are pretty graphic in detail, and I just, you know, it, it just bothers me, because it's just so one-sided, and I don't want the public to get any ideas about our officers.
Right. And once they submit a claim, unfortunately, the claim becomes a public document, it's received in the ordinary course of business, but I, I agree, there can be sensitivities when we're trying to protect our own employees, and Doug, if it's okay with you, I mean, the policy could be to put these in closed session and briefly discuss them.
Councilmembers?
Yes.
Bring these all to closed session?
No, not every one where it lists specific names of employees or people affiliated with the city. Doug, do you have a concern with that, or?
I don't have a concern if there's no legal issue with it. This is open and transparent, as we've talked about. This is an, an item that really is more of a legal question, in my opinion.
Yes.
It's been our impression that this is the proper way to handle them. If the council wants to change, redact, do something different, and it's a legal manner of doing it, I have no issue with it.
Yeah, once the claim is filed, it becomes a public document, so the public's typically, it can avail themselves of all the documentation in any case. Certainly, if you're trying to protect employees, it's not a problem. Considering some of these in closed session, it's appropriate, since it is a threat of litigation. That's the precursor to filing litigation.
Well, in that case, we, we have to, this is on the agenda, we need to reject this, and then we need a legal opinion from the attorney, which ones of these kind of claims can we handle in closed session?
And I'd be glad-
And which ones do we have to do in public? Or if we have to do it in public, can we redact the names and just put it as a claim against Sheriff's Department, whatever?
I will be glad to also go over that with the, with the city's risk manager and come up with some recommendations.
Okay.
And this, our concern here is not anybody complaining against any, well, yeah, I guess anytime it involves a city employee that the employee's name.
It's probably more when it, when it enters the arena of personnel issues and complaints about performance of personnel.
I would think that if, I was an employee, and I didn't have an opportunity to rebut any of these allegations publicly in these agendas, and it hurt me, because it's out there for everyone to see, that I would have a claim against the city for that. So I think that under personnel confidentiality, and especially, especially officer safety, because some of these allegations are just really bad and disturbing, so I would rather they be either held in closed session or redact.
I will research it more thoroughly and work with the, with the city's risk manager and come up with a recommendation for you.
Okay, thank you.
Good points. Okay, now we do, and I think they're very good points, so. We will now have a motion to approve item H separately.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries with Mayor Pro Tim McEagren absent.
Item thirteen. I didn't get lost. Two ten, two thousand and ten Homeland Security Grant Proposal, Mr. Sam Lucia, from the Police Department. Thank you very much for submitting that. Motion, please.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries with Mayor Pro Tim McEagren absent.
Item fourteen is a Waste Tower Amnesty Grant Program application, accompanied by Resolution Number thirteen dash zero zero four.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries with Mayor Pro Tim McEagren absent.
Item number fifteen. This is a service provider agreement submitted by John, Sean McGlade, John, Sean. If there's no questions with staff, ready for motion?
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Vias. Motion carries with Mayor Pro Tim McEagren absent.
Item number sixteen, presentation of request to approve award to purchase two Class Three and one Class Five trucks for projects, number JM thirteen dash oh three six, and included additional to the five-year measure I planned for fiscal year 2012/13. Oh, I'm sorry, we have a card before I... Oh, I covered it up, I am so sorry. I'm sorry, this, we don't have a card on number seventeen. If there's a motion and a second, we'll complete it, and I'm going to go back to number sixteen, because I did miss the card, my apologies. Is there a motion and a second?
There is a motion. There is a motion.
Okay, proceed on that. There is no one wanting to speak on item number 17, the item is 16, so.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to have to recuse myself on 17. I thought we were still on 16.
All right, you're right, and I got confused. One up, sir. I was trying to go before the snow got here, that's all.
Hi again, Mr. Mayor and Honorable Counsel. I just had a question on number 16. I'm looking at it, and it's, I wanted to learn a little bit more before I had my question, but correct me if I'm wrong, we're spending money for trucks from purchased in San Bernardino? Is that correct?
We, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
One of the vehicles is from Sunland Ford here in Victorville, the other two are from other cities. Correct.
Couldn't buy them from here, or our Ford guy? I'm just curious. Wouldn't we get, like, tax from it, or?
There's actually a local vendor preference of 3% that when local companies bid into city jobs like this, they do get a preferred treatment in comparison. However, in these, for the other two vehicles, the local vendor was, did not submit a price that was close enough to win those bids. So ultimately, they went to two dealers that were outside of the city, correct?
And my second question would be, the funds for these vehicles, would that be from the Community Services Capital Budget Fund, or Capital Fund, or, I'm just curious?
There are multiple funding sources. In this case, I believe most of it is Measure I, which is transportation dollars. After you're done with your questions, I would ask our Director of Public Works to come up and respond to that question, if that's something the council is...
Maybe if you could explain the, well, I'm curious where the funding kind of came from a little bit, because if it is Community Service Capital Budget, I was wondering if there's other things that Community Service Capital Budget could do? Could we look at the pool? I don't know if we've renovated the pool, if we looked at, like, cost-efficient light bulbs in the gym, or just, I was just curious if there was such, if there was a Community Service Capital Budget at all. So I didn't know, but I'd be happy to hear what the director has to say, and then maybe he'll answer all my questions.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. McGlade, if you could come up and explain the funding sources for these three vehicles, please?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and page two of the staff report. We do, in fact, list the funding sources. Truck A is from Solid Waste Management. Truck B is Landscape Maintenance Assessment District and Drainage Facility Assessment District. And Truck C is Storm Drain Fund, Gas Tax, Measure I, and Sewer Funds.
Thank you, Mr. McGlade. I was looking for that as the speaker was talking, I couldn't find it in time.
Sean, do we have any such thing as Community Services Capital Budget?
That's not something I would handle.
Let me answer that. We don't have any significant capital projects in community services this budget year. We are looking at doing a significant repair on the pool, there is a crack, and so that is using existing budgets. We do have Development Impact Fee Fund for new facilities, it's not for maintenance, and that is, we do have some funding there. We don't have any projects planned in the near term, at least with that.
Did I understand, there's a motion and a second?
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries with Mayor Pro Tim McEckern absent.
I'm going to recuse myself on 17. My son is an agent with Coldwell Banker Commercial.
Agenda item number 17, Presentation of Request to Approve a Professional Consultant Service Agreement for Professional Brokerage Services, Project Number JM 13-026. Is there a motion and a second?
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Councilmember Garcia. Motion carries with Mayor Pro Tim McEckern and Councilmember Kennedy absent.
Open the door, don't let him get comfortable in the hallway. Agenda item number 18, Request to Approve Solicitation of Proposals for Professional Services to Conduct a Public Safety Joint Powers Authority Feasibility Study.
Can you tell us more about this?
You bet. This item has been in discussion for a little while amongst the city managers and town manager in the High Desert. Last year, during our budget cycle, the contracts for both Sheriff's Department and the fire, for County Fire, increased a total of about $1.2 million, with essentially no change in service. In discussions with the county CEO, and with other city managers, as well as the county sheriff and the fire chief, it would appear that we've got at least two more years of cost increases coming due to smoothing in their retirement fund accounts. Not knowing how much those are exactly, it's a little bit unsettling, having effectively no control over the costs of those services. The only control this council would have, if the costs go too high, would be to reduce services, effectively paying for less. The city managers have talked about this for a little while now, and this item appears on our agenda tonight, as well as Hisperia's agenda tonight. I believe it will be on Apple Valley's agenda next Wednesday, and Adelanto shortly thereafter. With the idea being, typically, we don't come to the council before issuing an RFP. We go out, we solicit proposals for something that staff believes we need to bring to the council. Once we have those bids back, those proposals back with cost numbers, then we bring it to the council. Because this is a very high-profile issue, we wanted to change that up a little bit, out of respect to the city councils and the town council in Apple Valley, and solicit your input, whether we should even go that far. The intent here is not at all to complain about the level of service that we receive from our county sheriff or from County Fire. They provide excellent service to the city. Unfortunately, there are costs that the county incurs in providing that service. Those costs are spread out throughout all the contract cities, and ultimately, the citizens of Victorville end up picking up a large portion of that cost. Just as an example, the county sheriff contract, last year, had about $500,000 that did not go to the county sheriff, it actually went to the county office itself, the CEO's office, the finance office, those sorts of things, as part of the contract. It's called the CalCap, the Cost Allocation Plan. So last year, it cost us $500,000, just for the benefit of doing business with the county. This year, that cost was increased to about $850,000, very late in our budget process, and the county board of supervisors voted to delay that implementation for about six months. But next year, it will be that full $850,000 or so thousand, depending on exactly what the employee costs command. So that $850,000, assuming it remains the same next year, goes not to the county sheriff, but to the county themselves, just for managing the county sheriff department, I suppose, for lack of a better way of putting it. County fire increases were largely due to increases in retirement and in the need to pay for future retirement costs that aren't being totally covered by investments that they make. They've done an excellent job, actually. I was speaking with the chief about this last week. They've done an excellent job in those investments, but the need is growing faster than the fund. So there are, there have been increases over the last couple of years, and it's estimated that there's two more years of that coming. So the intent of this is to provide an option to each of the communities in the High Desert to look at possibly either forming our own department for police and fire, or the overarching issue that we're looking at studying here is a joint powers authority, so that we have some economies of scale, not quite as good as what the county may have. We don't have any way of knowing if that's going to come back, that it would be more expensive than what the county is currently providing a service for, less expensive. But the key is, we need to give options. We believe it prudent to give options to the councils, each of the councils, to consider maintaining a high level of service, potentially at a lower cost, and if it did come in at a lower cost, potentially actually adding officers for the same cost that we pay now. We don't really know. Certainly, we could all speculate, but I don't want you to make decisions about potential changes to the way public safety is provided without having the data. In order to get the data, we need to do request proposals, to see what the cost would be, to see what the study would look like, and then at that point, it would come to each of the councils for a decision on whether or not to even perform the study. So this is sort of a three-step process. This would be step one, there's no risks, no cost to the city. But I do want to reiterate that this has absolutely nothing to do with any feeling of bad service, or even average service. We get great service from both County Fire and County Sheriff.
My question would be, it says fiscal impact is zero, but who pays for the study?
The, this isn't the study yet, that's why it probably looks a little strange, because normally, we don't bring an RFP to the council before it goes out. This is simply asking you, are you interested in studying the cost of doing the study? So if this is approved tonight, and approved at the Hisperia City Council meeting tonight, and assumed to be approved in the other communities in the next couple of weeks, then Hisperia would be the lead agency to do a request for proposals, cost proposals, for consultants to study this issue for us. That's when it would have a cost. At this point, just to prepare the RFP, there's no cost to doing that.
So when you do this, is this, when you say a joint powers, does that mean that it's, like how, right now, the Sheriff's Department has a captain and lieutenant in every station? So would it be like, one captain and lieutenant would be for all of us, the cities? So that would reduce the cost? And would it be through the Sheriff's Department, or would we be hiring our own people to take the place?
If ultimately, this results that the JPA saves money, and the communities up here want to do that, there's no way to know exactly what the staffing levels would be. I don't think there would be a huge change as far as the number of captains and lieutenants. What the difference would be, would be comparing, potentially having three or four chiefs of police and fire chiefs, one for each city, versus having a regional, much like your agency, BBWRA or VBTA, to where it's a joint board, and you would have one fire chief for this new joint powers authority, one police chief for this new joint powers authority, and then the staffing would be built probably very similar to the way it is now, with a captain for each service area.
And, would we have one station for all areas, or would we have different stations?
Well, that's, again, that's part of the study to be determined. Right now, the, at least the cities of Hisperia and Victorville own the police stations, we own our fire stations, so I don't think there would be much of a change. There would be, at some point, the, you know, the potential chief would be assigned to a certain location, that's yet to be determined.
Okay, that's all I have.
As I get it, this is an RFP to find out what it would cost us to study this as an option.
That's correct. This is not actually doing the study yet.
Yeah, I mean, we've contracted with the sheriff since, what, 1962, since we were I have little or no interest in changing that arrangement, but I am, like you, pretty unhappy about what the CAO has done, loading his admin costs on contract cities. That bothers me. And if you came back to us and said, gee, these things are really justified, they make a lot of sense, we understand why he's doing it, I might not be so inclined to go along with this idea, but fire, we've only been with fire, what, four or five years, six years?
About that, I think it's four or five.
I think we owe it to ourselves and the community, at least, to find out what it would cost us to study the option.
And what's unfortunate is that when the county, the CAO, is it, or CEO?
It's the CEO now.
CEO.
Did this, you know, put this cost on to the Sheriff's Department, it really put the Sheriff's Department in a bad situation with the contract cities, because they're not increasing our services, but yet, we're paying more, but it doesn't go to their department for more cars or more police. And it's really unfortunate that this CEO has put the cities in this situation. I'm actually very, very pleased that the cities are taking a stand. And I'm with Mr. Kennedy, we owe it to our citizens to make a safer city.
The CEO would tell you that the costs that are being shared to the contract cities are exactly what should be shared. He believes that it's the right number. I have my doubts. I don't know that the study work that was done back in 19, mid-'90s, I'll say, is still viable today. We've worked, tried to work with the county to get either a new study, or a better explanation as to how those costs are determined. Without exaggerating, this is, the CalCap, the county's cost allocation plan, is essentially a 200-page spreadsheet. There is no text. I've spent many hours analyzing it and understanding it, and I think I may understand it better than some of the folks on the other side of the table, as we've been having these discussions, in all honesty. I think eventually, there will be a study done by the county that will better justify, or at least be more understandable than the current methodology. That would take a couple of years, most likely, for them to accomplish. They aren't doing it yet, but I know it's something that is on their long-term plans.
The only comment that I have is, several years ago, when county administration was putting forth CalCap, or the Cost Allocation Plan, I had argued that unless they're funding a service strictly by fees, that the property tax comes involved, and the city of Victorville pays a humongous property tax and other fees to the county. Even the county is a recipient of a lot of our sales tax, and if they're going to do a full study, we ought to receive the credit back. I know the cooperation of the police department is so great, that we offset county costs, and they offset our costs, because of working together. My initial reaction was, we don't want to do this, because I'm really happy with our services, really happy with the police department, but I didn't realize that there was 850,000 administrative cost. How many officers would that be?
Um, gosh, probably four or five.
Yeah, see, that's, that is a point where I think we do stop, and at least let the Sheriff's Department know, we are really extremely happy with the services they're providing, but let county administration know, we're really unhappy with that cost, because this isn't just Victorville for Victor Valley. I'm assuming this is Victorville, Hisperia, Apple Valley, and the county areas. That's a hellacious cost for administrative fees, needs to be looked at, I agree. Motion and second?
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Councilmember Garcia.
On item number...
Councilmember Kennedy, may I get your vote?
I'm sorry.
But, and then he undid it.
Oh.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Got it?
Motion carries with Mayor Pro Tim McEckern absent.
Item number 19, is a business card, name badges for city planning. Before we have the discussion, there is a request for an individual to speak, Mr. Hakim Majid. Am I pronouncing that right, Majidi?
Hello, Mr. Mayor.
Majid, I'm sorry. Hakim Majid Senior.
Hello again, Mayor and Council. I wanted to share with you my feelings on this motion, or this idea. I wanted you to know that I am going to, I have the privilege of serving on the Community Services Advisory Committee, meaning I'm going to be representing you, and I want to make sure that that relationship that I have is the best possible standard. It is my intention to try to follow the relations with the school district by going there, speaking, trying to get the communication flowing again... flowing again. You'd be surprised what you could do, what you could accomplish with a table, chair, and a cup of hot coffee, and some people in, around the table, talking and listening. That's what my, my intention is. If not having a business card, that's fine, but a name tag, I think, would be sufficient, or would be well-received when I'm out in the public, representing you. I don't want to, you know, I'm backing up. I know that there would be some guidelines associated with it. I know the city staff has guidelines, and I, I have no problem with following those guidelines that the city staff follows for a name tag, or something to that effect, when I'm out in the public, trying to, to do, to do some work in that aspect, but I would urge you to consider it. And the last thing I want to say is, for a name, for a phone number or something, I would, nothing would please me more than to have my name on a card with Carol Lee Bates' phone number on it. They could call the city clerk. I didn't mean to poke fun at you, but they could call, you could put the city clerk's phone number on it, so it'll, it'll still go to an official place. But I just urge you to, to consider it. As I go out, and like I said, talking to the school districts, and trying to warm relationships with, with, with the city, I would hope that you would consider it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Majid.
Mr. Mayor, prior to the council's discussion on this item, I would like to clarify one issue. The, the cost of name badges or cards is really negligible. That isn't something that the council would need to, to enter into your discussions tonight. I mean, we're talking maybe a hundred dollars for everything we would need to, to purchase. Should the council opt to do this? A couple hundred dollars at, at worst.
I would, I would point out to the council that we have an individual representing an advisory committee that's made the request. We have five members on that advisory committee. We have five members on the planning commission. We have five members on seven committees. It would be grossly unfair to say one individual would get cards or nameplate, and the others don't. I don't think it's an issue of providing Mr. Majid with the badge, or, you know, I'd do it for him if that was it. The issue is, do you want to provide all? That's the issue. You cannot discriminate against the rest.
Yeah, I wouldn't think that we would, but I, I just think that, you know, to have somebody on the planning commission, they're out there, they're talking to people, they're, you know, doing what they do on the planning commission. I think that, you know, it would bring an official capacity to them, as well as a professionalism, to have a name tag and some business cards. And also, there's, there's things for community services that, you know, because I work, I can't attend everything, like the homeless shelter, the warming shelter, they constantly ask for me, or a representative, to come. I can't always go to a lot of things, but there are some things that I could send my, a community service member to, to, to see how he could help, or let me know what's going on, or what's happening. And I just would like the council to consider doing that for, for all of our official committees.
No questions?
No questions. Then the chair is open for a motion.
Mayor, if I might, I have a concern. And the only concern I have is that you, if you agree to do this, that you adopt a formal policy applicable to all commissions, the primary purpose of which is to ensure that everybody's aware that if they have the badge or the business card, that they don't use it for personal gain, for political contributions. And if you have a written policy, hopefully, that will ensure that everybody abides by that policy. In the past, communities have been somewhat hesitant to do it, primarily out of the, the history, where I think it was even Lee Baca gave badges to various members of the community that looked very much like police badges. And I don't think that's what you're proposing here. I think it's more like a name tag-type badge, but if you adopt a policy, you can ensure at least some compliance with that, and the same is, is true with respect to how you use the business cards, so that you're not using them for political gain, or for benefits, personal, financial gains.
I, I think, at the beginning, and when I first looked at this, I was kind of opposed to it, and partly because it, partly because it, it seemed like a silly waste of money, even if it's a small amount of money. But, but more than that, I was concerned about, how do you, how do you control and administer something like this? People go on and off of commissions. You, I got a, I've got a box of business cards. You, you can't buy them 30 at a time, you know? You buy them 500 at a time, sitting in a desk drawer in the council office, and I don't think I've ever handed a city council business card to anybody since I've been on the council. I, I have name badges, and I always forget them. So when I go to an event, I fill out one of those little white things, and stick it on my shirt, and it says, Jim Kennedy, Victorville City Council, and that, that has worked pretty well. And I guess I just think, I, I think it would be a lot easier, it's going to be a kind of a difficult, managing, administrative problem for staff, to make sure that when people go on the commission, they get one, when they go off the commission, they get them back, and that kind of stuff. So I, you know, my initial reaction is that I don't really want to do it.
Chair is open for a motion. We have a motion. We have, don't have a second? We do not have a second? Motion, we have a second?
Clarification. This is a motion to approve the request. Is that correct?
Would you require that staff prepare a policy, or is that...
Yes, I think that's very important.
I really do believe that we need to establish a policy first, before we issue anything.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Councilmember Garcia. The motion fails on a two-two vote.
It's a first.
Okay, motion fails. That means that it's standing. If any council member wants to come back and consider a policy, they can make that request, because council would consider a policy. We didn't vote on the policy. That's still an open question, if you'd like to pursue that. Item twenty, and then, based upon the policy, or based what happens, this motion can be considered at a later time. Item twenty, discussion of possible action regarding items for the upcoming city council agenda. Now, last time I asked Mr. Robinson, and he said this is for each of the council members. Did I get that right or wrong? Is it your proposal for new agenda items, or each of the council members?
This is for each of the council members to propose items for the future agenda, for any future agenda items, and what we've, the way we've structured it is that there needs to be a consensus of at least three to put an item on the agenda.
Okay. Last time, I don't know which side we started, but we will start with Ms. Gloria. We're sorry, here, this time.
I don't have any.
Don't have any items? And the chair will reserve to be the last to speak each time. Mr. Kennedy?
Yeah, this is a future item. I'm going to propose it to staff, or propose it to council. I, I've got to believe it's doable. I'd like to get an idea of the shortfalls that we are going to experience, as best we can predict them over the next few years, on servicing our bond debt at the airport.
Good idea.
We know that, that, that in December, it's, I think December is the time when we generally come up short. And I'd like to think we're, we're shrinking that shortfall, but I'm not sure if that's true. And I would like to get out in front of this, and let the public know that these aren't surprises. Once a year, we know this is going to happen, as long as the property tax revenues are as low as they are. So if it's doable, could you come up with a, kind of a simple projection that we can all digest, about how we're going to come up short over the next two, three, four, or five years, whatever you think might be appropriate?
I think that is doable. We've got property tax estimates, projections that we can put together. The one thing that I would want to be sure and caution the council, before we come back with an item such as that, is that we double-check the, the laws and rules with regard to public disclosures of information. We, when we have an issue come up that is a potential impact to bondholders, they have a right to, to all receive that information at the same time, so we're required to post it through the electronic municipal markets, reporting, associations reporting through the SEC, and through financial markets. So to the extent we can provide a report to the council that doesn't violate those rules, I would have no issue with the council requesting such, such a report.
Well, if the council is interested in having that information, and, and you find that it's, you can do it without breaking any laws, or violating any bond agreements, maybe you could tell us next time around, next meeting, if you can do it.
Right. All right. The, the way this is structured is, the council would direct staff to put it on the future agenda for a discussion, and we would take action only after getting that direction. So we can research that in the interim, so that you guys can make an informed decision in, in two weeks.
And that's my request of the council.
All right. If there's no objections, that's ordered. Any other items, Mr. Kennedy?
That's it.
Vias?
Just that, I, I wanted to have a presentation for the synthetic drugs, but I guess they're waiting till after their other meeting?
Right. In the email that you and I received from Cory, indicated that she would like to meet with the Sheriff's Department, and, before she comes forward. And so what we would do is, at such time as she's ready, and the Sheriff's Department is ready, we can have a presentation on the efforts that Cory would like us to, to undergo, and then the efforts to date from the Sheriff's Department, and an update on that as well. So we can dovetail together.
Want them to bring back a policy?
Okay, I'll bring back a policy for the business cards.
I change your mind. You know, it's a good policy.
No objections? Okay. I have an item that I would like to consider, and I'm not so sure that the city council would agendize this, or refer it to staff, or refer it to the planning commission. But one of the things that this community is lacking is code enforcement. And I have more complaints about code enforcement than any single item. I think it's brought about because so many people walked away from housing, or the foreclosures, or a lot of issues, that we had neighborhoods that looked like instant ghettos. A lot of those houses are sold, that's good. They're being rented, that's good. But it's bad, because there's no improvements being made, and while people are living there, and that's an improvement. The wooden fences have fallen down. It's pretty dreadful. I also have been informed, unofficially, that the city council in the past kind of sent a message, I'm saying they sent a message, it wasn't a directive, they didn't want big government picking on people. People aren't totally aware of all of the code enforcement requirements. They built that block wall against the sidewalk innocently, and so we, the staff had to find a way to give an encroachment permit, and not take an action to remove it, but at the same time, deny the neighbor the encroachment permit to build the block wall because they asked for it. I don't think that's the way to do business. And now we have a hodgepodge of rules and regulations in regard to board fences, block walls, encroachment permits. We have burned-out buildings that are setting because we apparently, quote, "don't have the money to post the building when it should be posted." It's, the garbage and debris should be removed, and the property should be leaned, and it is getting worse, not better. And so, council members, do you want to agendize it, or do you want to, because when I discussed sending this to code enforcement, unofficially, they are afraid to take an action because of the history of the council not wanting to back them when we have code enforcement. I want to back them for code enforcement, and I want the city council to back them also. Comments from the council? We have a definite yes. I'll refer this to Mr. Doug Robertson, city manager, and we'll get a follow-up on this soon. Thank you very much. Item, item, am I out of an agenda? It's snowing yet.
I can't quite tell.
Not between here and your house.
Well, you know, who said I'm going home?
[laughing]
Okay, council re...
This is a Missouri farm boy, by the way, and suffering with a little bit of cold weather.
Okay, we have the upcoming items. We now have reports from the staff and the council. We'll start to my right this time, Mr. Kennedy.
Just two things. The Audit Committee met last Tuesday. Gloria Garcia and I are on that committee, met with the partner in charge of the audit. They're very close to having that report issued. We spent some time reviewing big, big-picture issues in the report. There will not be a going concern modification this year as to the city of Victorville. However, there will be a going concern modification in their report as to the airport, and as to the extent the airport impacts the city of Victorville. And that is largely connected to RDA, and, and some of the unknown factors, and how all that might impact the airport. But I would expect in the next month or so, we should see a report from them. Have you seen the actual final report yet, Doug?
I have not seen the final report. It will likely be issued, I would think, by the end of this week. Their presentation to the council for acceptance, not approval, but acceptance is, we're trying to get it scheduled. Looks like, right now, it can't happen until the second meeting in March, because there's a conflict with our audit partner for the first meeting in March. He's already got, he's already scheduled for another city, so probably be, well, March 19th, would, it would be presented to the council in, in full. But it'll actually be finished and finalized and submitted before that time.
And just, just so everybody is clear on this, this is, an audit committee, in my opinion, is important, and the council agreed when I came on the committee, on the council, that we would form one. And it can only include two council members, because you can't have more than that on a committee. But it's important that the audit firm has somebody to communicate with inside the governing structure of the city beyond just management. Management is who they're auditing, so we attempt to perform that function. Of course, they are ultimately accountable. The Audit Committee reports to this council, I'm sorry, the auditor reports to the council. But the committee gives them an intermediary to, to communicate with. The other thing I wanted to mention is, I am currently chairing the BBWRA Board of Commissioners. We had a very, very informative session this afternoon. Councilmember Vias was there, but not as a council member, as a staff person, so we didn't tinker with any of our brown neck issues. But very good discussion about the capital projects on the horizon at BBWRA, and there's a bunch. There's probably 125,000, did I say thousand?
You said so.
I didn't mean thousand. I add some zeros. I've been losing zeros all day. 125 million dollars of projects underway, and, and there's a full range of them, all of them important, all of them fairly urgent. And the community will be seeing and hearing more about that over the near future, I think. That's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Vias?
And none at this time?
Councilmember Garcia?
And I have none at this time.
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple, actually. I promised to get you home quickly, though, if I could be so rude as to interrupt you as you're reaching for the gavel.
Yeah.
I know, I know. You've likely already heard this, but because of the storm tonight, the planned northbound closure of I-15 has been delayed by one, one day. It will not be closed tonight. It will be closed tomorrow night, overnight, and then the following night, overnight as well, until 6:00 AM. It'll be open during the day. That's the northbound. Southbound closures are next week, so keep an eye out to make sure that those aren't rescheduled. Right now, they are currently on, on schedule, so. If you weren't able to attend the State of the City address by the mayor, Mayor Protem and myself, we've posted a, a video of it. It's not a high-dollar, high-produced video. It's essentially somebody with a camcorder from the audience. But you can see the speakers, and you can see the slides as they, they pop up. You can see that on our, on the city's website, if you choose to view it. You can throw tomatoes at your TV, I guess, or your computer. And most importantly, and most excitedly, actually, it is 8:30. As of midnight, we believe that the final check from the Foxborough-Carterburg settlement will have cleared, meaning that as of tomorrow, the $54 million will be wired to the city, and also to the, to the trustee, per agreements in the letter of credit with BNP Paribas. So essentially, 30 million... per agreements in the letter of credit to, with BNP Paribas. So essentially, $30 million will go to the trustee to buy down the bonds for the Foxborough project, and then 24 million will come to the city. 22 million of that is immediately repaid to the Water District for borrowing from the Vimos Utility. Water District then will repay the Airport Authority for bond funds that they had to borrow as well. So we will eliminate, in one fell swoop, there'll actually be a budget item, probably at the next agenda, on the next agenda, to eliminate, I'll say a majority, it's not all, but a majority of the internal borrowing that exists in the city right now. So cross your fingers that that last check clears tonight, and we are, things are looking up, just to give you a little preview for what you might look at the computer later tonight, so.
I think before we receive any bad news, we ought to adjourn this meeting. No objections? Thank you, Doug.